Okay, Ashley, can I roll call please?
Jerdy.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
Briggs.
Here.
Cavalier.
Here.
Cressel.
Here.
Clapp.
Here.
Ed Bratton.
Here.
Melby.
Here.
All right, it's time for the open forum. If anyone would like to address the council on any issue not already on tonight's agenda, please come to the podium, state your first and last name and address, please. Hearing none from the council chambers. Chad, is there anybody on phone bridge, please?
There is no one on the bridge, I will close it, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Agent logged on.
We have a presentation in there. We've got Mark Lenda, he's the executive director of the Crookston Chamber. He's gonna kinda tell us a little bit about himself and an update on what's going on. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council for giving me an opportunity. As the mayor mentioned, I am the executive director at the Chamber of Commerce. I started in July, so I had been around for a few months, but I haven't had a chance to meet all of you yet, so I'm glad that we can do that today. I'm actually from just across the river. I grew up on a small farm in rural Grand Forks County, attended school in Thompson. And from there, I went on to the University of North Dakota where I received my degree in business administration with the double business major in marketing and management. Most of my background involves sales, marketing, or management positions, working in all kinds of different fields. But the ones that I think are most applicable to my position with the Chamber are one nonprofit and one government position. I ran the Empire Arts Centers Executive Director for about six and a half years. I'm sure most of you are familiar with the Empire and Grand Forks. For those that aren't, it's a nonprofit performing arts center that was created out of an old movie theater. When it was originally finished and opened up as a nonprofit, it was run by a small arts group in Grand Forks who had no experience with the facility management and had a lot of difficulty. So, the group that raised the funds to do the remodeling took it over, started a new nonprofit, and they wanted someone with business experience, so they hired me to run the facility. When I started, it was being used about forty days a year and was several hundred thousand dollars in debt. I ran the facility for six and a half years. We were doing almost two hundred days a year in events, and we had eliminated all of the debt, so I'm really proud of my position over there. From there, I moved on to work for North Dakota Vocational Rehabilitation. My position was a business specialist, so I worked with the business community a great deal on workforce development issues, especially related to people with disabilities, but not entirely just disabilities, and also other disability-related issues. And I think that's really applicable because I spent so much time working with the business community. I was so involved with the business community that I actually joined the Grand Forks Human Resource Managers Group and ended up serving on their Board of Directors for six years and got involved with the state group. So I have a little experience with the workforce development part of what the Chamber does and some of the other issues. Also spent a lot of other time as volunteer nonprofits, served on multiple boards over the years, the state level, local, regional. At the national level, I've served on several different committees for different organizations. So I have a lot of experience working with different nonprofit groups in different places, different kinds of groups, including planning a lot of large community events in the Grand Forks area. If you've been to a major event in Grand Forks, there's a good chance I was part of it at some time in the last twenty years. Was part of the Art Fest for ten years, a former event held on New Year's Eve called First Night Greater Grand Forks for about a dozen years. I've helped with the Suratoma Fourth of July event for the last decade plus, the Greater Grand Forks Fair for more than fifteen years, helped start their Blues on the Reds event, a lot of others. So, got experience with those large events and helped with conventions. I have a really wide range of experience working with nonprofits and groups like that. Never worked for the Chamber in Grand Forks, but I've been a very active member for most of the last twenty years. Served on two of their committees, one for small business and one was a Government Education and Business Alliance, so it brought people from all those different groups together to work on issues for the community and helped with membership drives. And it was that work with the Chamber that made me interested in taking on this position here in Crookston when I found it was open. So I just wanted to give you a little brief rundown on what the Chamber is doing these days and what we're looking forward to in 2022. As everyone knows, we haven't been able to hold our, a lot of our in-person events, and I think that's an important part of what the Chamber does, is bringing people together, that networking, that getting people out and meeting people and letting them get involved with others is a really important part of the Chamber, and it's been difficult the last couple of years. We did hold our annual educators luncheon right before school started. We bring the teachers from all levels in Crookston together, buy lunch for them. Don't tell them, you know, don't try to preach anything to them, all we're doing is thanking them for serving the community by taking care of the youth. So we were able to do that. We were not able to hold our usual Chamber celebration this year. Normally, we would have done that sometime in the last month. Instead, since that's a fundraiser for us, instead, we held a raffle. And about ten days ago, we gave away seventy-five-hundred dollars worth of prizes to three individuals. And we consider it a successful raffle, we sold approximately eighty percent of our tickets, so we had a good turnout with that. Another thing we usually do at our Chamber celebration is give away our annual business and individual awards. Because of the not being able to hold it in person, we've been doing those on video again this year, and we gave most of those out last week. Riverview Health was chosen as our Large Business of the Year. Wonderful Life Foods was chosen as our Small Business of the Year. Allison Gatto, Designs by Allison, was our Entrepreneur of the Year. Our Lifetime Achievement Award went to KROX Radio and Chris Fee. And our Volunteer of the Year Award was given to Nick Caputo for his work with the COVID. We have one award left to give, and we're giving that out tomorrow, and that's to our Chamber champion. And I won't tell you where that's going, but we'll announce it tomorrow on Facebook. One of the things we've been doing this fall is working on some collaborations within the, in the community. One area is on beautification. The Chamber had a beautification committee for several years. We believe that there are several groups that have an interest in making Crookston an attractive place to live and visit. So we have partnered with the Crookston Visitors Bureau and the Downtown Crookston Development Partnership on the beautification committee. And we're also looking to work with individuals and groups as we look at developing the planters and the hanging baskets and any other ideas we can come up with for making Crookston a nice place to visit and to live. Most of that is at pretty low cost. If we have some ideas that would affect the city, we will come back and talk to you about those at some point in the future. Another program that was under the Chamber, but we believe really affects a lot of other people, is the Welcome Home Crookston Bags. These are bags filled with materials and information and trinkets and goodies that are given out to people moving into the community. They really haven't been done the last couple of years. We have reconfigured that a little bit, and again, we're working with both the Visitors Bureau and the Downtown Development Partnership, along with several businesses in town. We're hoping to have those up and running by early in January. We're now collecting some of the materials that are going into the bags, and we will be stuffing those bags, I believe, the first week in January. We are looking forward to doing a lot more hopefully in 2022 and trying to get back closer to normal. Our Women's Leadership Network was actually working on an event for this fall. We decided not to hold it because of COVID concerns, but we are looking at doing something soon. They're ready to do something right away, so I would think we will have some events probably before the end of winter with the Women's Leadership Network. We're already planning on doing a Leadership Crookston class again in 2022. And also, a lot more educational opportunities. I believe that the Chamber, one of the things they can do is bring educational opportunities to our local businesses, some things that businesses might not be able to do on their own. So we're looking at some luncheon learns or speakers or other things like that. We're going to bring back the Chamber mixers. I'm a big fan of the Chamber Business After Hours that Grand Forks has done. It's a great networking opportunity, lets you meet people that you never would meet before, and you can actually, you know, do a lot of business with those folks. So our plan is to start those up sometime in the new year. We're looking forward to an in-person Chamber celebration next year where we can do, we can really get together and celebrate the community and the businesses and everyone. Twenty-twenty-two is an election year, of course, so we're hoping to hold candidate forums as we've done in the past. And I'm working on a few new educational and other programming ideas for our members. So we've got a lot we're planning to do if the world cooperates with us in 2022, and we're looking forward to a great year. Any questions on what we've got going, or I'd be happy to answer anything?
Thanks for coming, Mark.
You bet, thank you for having me.
Okay, moving on, this brings us to the agenda. Does anyone wish to remove anything from tonight's agenda? Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda? Tom and...
I'll make that, I'll second that motion.
And Clayton, thank you, discussion? Hearing none, can I roll call, please?
Jerdy.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Cressel.
Aye.
Clapp.
Aye.
Ed Bratton.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
This brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Joe, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Christie. Roll call, please.
Jerdy.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Cressel.
Aye.
Clapp.
Aye.
Ed Bratton.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Okay, no public hearings, brings us to the regular agenda. Ashley.
Yes, Your Honor, item eight point zero one is a resolution approving the State of Minnesota Joint Powers Agreement with the City of Crookston on behalf of its city attorney and police department.
Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you, Don, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Steve, thank you. Discussion, Darren's gonna give us a little brief update with this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so about every three years, we just have to renew the SEJIS agreement with the city of Crookston and the police department. SEJIS agreement, SEJIS means Criminal Justice Information System. So that just allows the city attorney's office and the police department to use that system to exchange criminal justice data and use the platform called e-Charging, which we do all criminal complaints, and all our charging goes on that. So it's just a formality for us about every three years that we need to renew.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, can I roll call, please?
Jerdy.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Cressel.
Aye.
Clapp.
Aye.
Ed Bratton.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, moving on.
Item eight point zero two is a resolution approving the Addendum Three to the Special Group Joint Powers Agreement, Your Honor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you, Clayton, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Christie. Discussion, Darren, once again, will brief us a little bit.
So again, the Special Operations Group, that's the organization we're a member of at the Crookston Police Department. The SOG group consists of bomb squad, SWAT, unmanned aerial vehicle, and crisis negotiation. Because we're all a member, voting members, the city of Crookston being one of them, all this does is allow the Grand Forks Police Department to become a member of the UAV group, unmanned aerial vehicle, that they want to use for, it's becoming real popular now in fighting fires and assessing public safety risks where they can use drones to fly over fires or other situations to assess how they're gonna respond to that situation. Again, just a formality that we all need to agree upon and vote upon.
Right, thank you, Darren. Further discussion? Hearing none, can I roll call, please?
Jerdy.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Cressel.
Aye.
Clapp.
Aye.
Ed Bratton.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Item eight point zero three is a resolution approving a donation for the Crookston Fire Department, Your Honor.
Thank you, do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Tom, is there a second?
A second.
By Delane, thank you, discussion?
Nice of somebody to donate, sorry.
There it is. Hearing none, can I roll call, please?
Jerdy.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Cressel.
Aye.
Clapp.
Aye.
Ed Bratton.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Item point, excuse me, item eight point zero four is a resolution to approve the Park and Recreation Department to purchase the Active Network software, Your Honor.
Thank you, do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Joe, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Christie, discussion, Amy, please.
Yes, thank you. I'm gonna start us off, and then Jake and Chad will have a little bit to add, but I want to start by saying, we heard in our survey, we've heard from community feedback and even members of the council that have expressed frustration with our current program and recreation registration system, the way we are able to communicate out to parent groups for schedule changes is clumsy, if you will, and that's probably putting it nicely. This particular program, you will hear a little bit more about the benefits of when Jake and Chad step up. What I'm gonna talk to you about a little bit right now is the funding. The quote that, and the resolution that you have in front of you for twenty-five thousand includes the implementation fee and also includes the annual fee that would be for 2022. And I want to focus on that for a second. Right now, with what we have, we're paying about three thousand two hundred dollars annually for the current registration system that we have. It's not great, it doesn't allow for very good communication back to our groups. This new program you will hear allows you to sign up if you'd like text communication, email communication, if a schedule is updated, you can push that out. The annual fee for this proposed software system is forty-seven hundred, so for fifteen hundred dollars more a year, which is a very small amount in the Parks and Recreation budget, it really allows us to provide a better service for our communities. It allows some facility scheduling, that would be for rentals or games. It's a little bit broader scope than what we have access to now. So I will now hand that off to Jake and Chad to give us some more information on what we're gaining from this over what we have now, and then I'm happy to stand for any questions if you have them after that.
Thank you, Amy, thank you, Councilor Mayor. Kind of touch up what Amy said, yeah, with this new program, it's a great software for our, all our programs that we offer, not only programming, but the CSC, all our softball, baseball diamonds, anything that we rent, shelters. We can schedule, people can see what's on the schedule now, we can send out an email, a text, it's very, works very well. It's also a good marketing, there's good marketing communications, it has social sharing tools. Like I said before, they, all online registrations, we can schedule, comes back in reporting. It's just a great tool to have for our community, and with the things that we have going on, it'd be a great software program for Crookston, so, Chad?
And I'll mention as well that one of the capabilities is point of sale. If you want to talk a little bit, Jake, maybe, about your thoughts there?
So there's a point of sale app on this as well. My thought process for the future, potentially out at the Crookston Sports Center is right now we're offering some skate sharpening for not only our participants, but also people coming into our community that are coming into the rink. That's goalie skates, figure skates, hockey skates. I also thought of maybe putting a little pro shop out there, so selling things like hockey laces or tape for sticks, figure skating equipment, stuff like that, just a small little pro shop, and the point of sales on this Active Network would help with that, so.
And I will add that Active Network is the system that I am very familiar with and have used in my previous appointment with the city of Chaska for years. It was a great system for us, and it was very easy for me to recommend for the city of Crookston. It is a software-as-a-service model, which effectively means that it is a lease of software that does not require any additional upgrades to our server or our infrastructure here, IT infrastructure within the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion?
You say it's gonna cost about another fifteen to two grand annually?
Annually, yes.
But then was there a twenty-five thousand upfront cost?
The twenty-five thousand, it was just under that, twenty-four something, I've got it here somewhere, includes the setup fee and the first year, so going forward after it would be implemented, it is the, I think, let me pull that out, forty, I just tucked it away, I'm sorry.
And just to clarify, it's an additional fifteen hundred, not fifteen?
Yeah, fifteen hundred a year annually over the current software system that we're using now for registration.
Where's the twenty-five coming out, at Park and Rec?
It is proposed to come out of the Parks and Rec's reserves, which they have a very healthy reserve, we looked at that today, even with what we expect, may come out of that at a later time for the campground. We know that's not gonna be expensed this year. We expect to put some money into reserves for that unspent expense. They're sitting at a healthy about one point five or one point one five, I think, million right now in the Parks and Rec reserves. So we felt, after looking at that, that's healthy and can support this one-time fee. And then, with the additional benefits, both to staff, it integrates with our current financial system, our Tyler Incode for payments, and what we can offer back to our participants and those that are utilizing our facilities, we felt that the fifteen hundred additional a year, which is just on top of what we're paying now for our current service, it was worth it, in our mind.
Jake, can I ask, because I like some of the features here, I think one of the things that we're really lacking is the historical data and historical context of, like, how many kids have signed up for things in the past to kind of really decide whether or not our program should go forward in the future. I'm assuming that you guys will be keeping track of that in here as part of the piece. The other part, and I really would hope to see this, because I think this is something the council has consistently asked for, is really knowing what's going on in the community. And I see through the software that you're able to be very targeted and specific about who you're reaching out to based on age and interest. So if we do get this, I'd like to see that, you know, all those pieces are being utilized, because I think that that's really what we're looking for going forward. I also really appreciated the idea of, you know, text versus emails, because sometimes things are last minute, and I think most parents would like a text as they're driving somewhere or on their way to something. So I think that if you guys are really, like, fully taking advantage of the capabilities of this, I think this really could enhance the experience. I think this is something that we've seen in a lot of the surveys, but I'd really like to make sure that we're not utilizing it just for one or two pieces of it, that we're fully taking advantage of the software.
Yes, my vision for this software would be to take advantage of everything that we have to offer through Parks and Rec, and that's not just youth activities, but that could be events with, that we run or that other people run that we could help promote or stuff like that. It can be shelters, you know, I envision our pictures and just everything just out there, so the public knows what's going on, and not just the community, but the surrounding community and people that we have coming to our community, you know, I think it's gonna be a great tool, and it'll be worth it, so. And just to add, with that twenty-five thousand, they do come in, we can do it virtually, or they come here, and they will train, that's part of everything, they will come in and train us how to operate this and how to use it, and they go a hundred percent, so.
How long have we had our current system roughly? Anybody have any idea? Forever.
I would say well before my time, but that's not too long. I think we've been utilizing that for quite some time.
Yeah, so like I said, if we, you know, everything updates so quick with technology or whatever, and like I said, I hope we can get many years out of this before we have to look at this again, because like I said, twenty-five thousand now versus five years from now to another company or whatever, bigger, better, but. Sounds like they have pretty good support and coverage or whatever to help you.
How much time would a person have to put into this updating it weekly? Is it gonna be labor-intensive for somebody to do this? Is it, I mean, is it, is there gonna be a lot of work involved for somebody to keep everything up to date, or?
I, no, I don't believe so. Once we get it up and running, it's not gonna be a time-consuming, it's gonna be a lot easier for us to get the word out, get things going.
So who does the data entry? Is that probably somebody you or your staff, or?
Yep. Initially, to get everything started, we'll have to get, you know, everything organized and ready to go, but after that, it's, a lot of the stuff is online, so. It's just getting the word out there and getting things lined up on our software to start off with.
Jake, is it, correct me if I'm wrong, but most of this stuff you're doing now, but not all in one place, is that correct? I know some of our schedules are on the website.
Correct.
So would this maybe not add what you're doing, but condense it into one?
I think it would just condense it to one.
Centralized.
Centralized, yep.
So like, for example, your youth hockey games and stuff will be in here?
Yep, we could put it in here, and then that could be emailed or texted or, correct me if I'm wrong, Chad, but it should also email, or not email, but it should go on someone's calendar, right? So if you register, or if we get an email, it should go to their calendar and say, Bantam A's play at three o'clock on January twenty-third.
Correct, there are self-subscription capabilities of the software. And I will add as well, that as a software-as-a-service licensing model, the city of Crookston will enjoy any upgrades that come on an annual basis. There's no additional one-time fees to incorporate any new changes that would come to the modules that we purchase, so it's a very good way to stay up to date with that.
Be kind of nice for our city meetings to be automatically uploaded onto a calendar, so you don't have to do it yourself. I mean, there's not a way right now, is there?
I don't believe so, other than receiving an invite.
Right.
I think, I don't believe we have a calendar that you can subscribe to now.
We do not.
Okay.
Technology's everything, you know, I mean, it's one of those things, I think it's a good investment to be able to have the communication factor enhanced.
So do you ultimately think, between Jake and Chad, that this is gonna save you more time in the end? I understand, like, the initial uploads tend to be kind of a pain in the butt, but at the end of the day?
Yes, I a hundred percent agree with that.
Included within the one-time cost is a data migration.
Oh, nice.
Which will bring across as much as possible from our previous Park and Rec registration system. But that should ease with the initial data.
Yeah, that's always, not the fun part, but, yeah, okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, further discussion? Hearing none, can I roll call, please?
Jerdy.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Cressel.
Aye.
Clapp.
Aye.
Ed Bratton.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item eight point zero five is a resolution accepting the redistribution of the Unrequested Coronavirus Physical Recovery Fund established under the American Rescue Act plan.
Okay, thank you, do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved, Your Honor.
By Don, second by Wayne, thank you. Discussion, Ryan, can you give us a little update?
Back when you had to apply for these funds, some cities were electing not to participate in this because of all the extra work that would go into something like this. So then, after the time went through and Minnesota looked and saw, okay, these cities didn't partake of it, so then those unallocated funds then went to all the cities who were participating in. So the lump payment that we got for this resolution then is that amount.
What are we gonna use that amount for?
Well, we have an ARPA committee right now that meet once a week, and we are right now looking at, kind of like, we'll say, a wish list of things for their departments, things that are a need, a priority, and kind of going through. of things for their departments, things that are a need, a priority, and kind of going through those at this time. We're hoping within the new year to be able to come and Amy or I will present what some of these fund things are, because there are certain criteria that you have to meet with. Amy and I will be meeting also with the county after Gary Willhite, you know, came here and spoke and said we had the six point two million. I think that would be wise for the city to look at what kind of funding that they can help us with the project or not and.
Are they being a more clear of your boundaries where you can spend it, is that more clear?
The boundaries were always pretty clear when they first came out with these funds, and I know there's been some confusion over this broadband internet. And Chad and I have had numerous, numerous conversations to look through the fine print and twist it in different ways to see, well, broadband internet sounds like it'd be an easy thing just to do, but it's it's a very complicated thing to do and it's just not something that would benefit us at this time. As most of all of our community has internet service available to them.
And can I just ask, sorry, when you, can I clarify what you mean by that? So are you talking about like a city Wi-Fi, is that what you mean by broadband?
Yes, yeah, like a small community that currently doesn't have a broadband internet service, those costs and we could use ARPA funds for that. And then the other system Chad could talk about, if the city were to host a site, what that entails a little bit more?
Yeah, correct, so one of the stipulations of the ARPA funds for broadband is there is a set threshold of service level for all constituents within the area to be able to receive. The majority of our of our citizens, their needs on net with the current incumbent broadband internet service providers within the area. If we were to go down the road of offering internet, competitive internet service to existing providers, we would have to ensure that the platform that we would bring in, that we need to purchase, may set up and maintain on an ongoing basis, meets a certain bandwidth threshold for every single one of our constituents, including customers. And it it's it's quite an under undertaking to be able to implement and and maintain a system of that nature. Speaking from experience, having operated for multiple years, a wireless ISP in my previous appointment, I can attest to how much work that actually, and investment that actually is.
So can I just ask kind of like a side question to that? With like what Bemidji's done with their GigaZone, having that stronger broadband or stronger internet connection, is that similar to what you're thinking would be too much for the city?
I think it would be a requirement to define exactly what area we would, we would want to undertake to set something like that up. And and again, we would be starting completely from scratch without any internet hosting capability or service equipment in hand at at the moment. So again, eliminating it to it to a small zone makes it a bit easier, but there are specific requirements within the ARPA dollars that the entire constituency be served through the effort.
Sure, sure, okay.
And when you, when I have to do the reporting for this, if we chose to do something like that and I send in the paperwork, they could reject it and then we are stuck paying for something that we were going to try to get through. So we want to really make sure that we meet all those criterias.
So what are some other examples of what this money could be used for?
We are kind of looking right now at a lot of the wastewater, water infrastructure. Those seem to be a lot of what other communities are looking at doing. Some of the lead-based pipes, working at getting quotes and stuff right now and working with Brandon, he's getting some quotes on what some cost of these things would be, what we're looking at. Trying to partner maybe with the county on some of those.
So any of these dollars, can it be used for stuff that we probably budgeted for in twenty twenty-two that would help our 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 dollars, our spending dollars for that?
It depends upon the need, if it's if it's something that you're going to do, that's going to benefit the community as a whole, yes, those typically are the things that we want to look at doing.
Because I would think that that would be best used if we're going to spend it out of our budget to do something and we got this money that we could use that for and that would help us save some money for the next year, I guess, is what I'm thinking.
Um, to a degree, you can do that. ARPA is looking at more of promoting some of these different criterias that they want us to look at as a city, not current things that we already have in place or to upgrade different things that we have in place as the city.
Can I, I'm going to jump in real quick, we do actually have some proposed expenditures out of ARPA funds in our twenty twenty-two budget that are related to the wastewater system. And then we do plan likely at some ways and means committees, we needed to get through finalizing twenty twenty-two budget, but coming back and having some discussions with you as a body about what some of that criteria is and what some staff proposals are there. I believe there will be some opportunities to at least request maybe some matching funds from the county on some various projects we've looked at, but we will bring all of that before you. We don't have anything developed to the level of presenting you the proposal today. But knowing that any of our our budget cycle here is coming up and finalizing this twenty twenty-two budget, that will be on our priority list, that we will utilize some ways and means meetings to have some of those discussions, provide some education and try to get some ideas on how we would like that to look and how we want to utilize that, those ARPA funds as a community.
Thank you, Ryan, further discussion? There are none, can I roll call, please?
Tertie?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavillier?
Aye.
Cressel?
Aye.
Platt?
Aye.
Bedbrotten?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item eight point zero six is a resolution adopting property tax levy for taxes payable in twenty twenty-two, your honor.
Thank you, do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So move.
Thank you, Wayne, is there a second?
A second, your honor.
Second by Delane, discussion, Amy, you got it all?
Yes, your honor, thank you, I was hoping under this item being the first of our three budget-related items that we have, I have a condensed version, if you will, of some of the information that we looked at at the truth and taxation meeting that I was hoping to run through, but I would be happy under any of the items to address any questions that you have at that time. Chad, would you go to the first slide for me after that one? Okay, I guess we can go past that, list of our, list of our department heads. The next screen you'll see, we showed it, the truth and taxation, and that presentation will be available online and it is also going to be available as a recorded version on YouTube if anyone missed it or would like to go back and look at it. This is showing you just a snapshot of the proposed twenty twenty-two budget that at our last discussion, there was consensus to prepare for you at the eight percent increase. What you are used to seeing that's different on this screen is that we have moved the general fund detail and the parks and rec detail to a later screen, but showing you estimated expenditures, estimated non-property tax receipts, reserve dollars that are either scheduled to be used or or put into reserves, balance needing funding, our certified local government aid for twenty twenty-two and how that is dispersed throughout the funds, our total tax levy, the levied funds are your four levied funds in yellow. And then the far two columns, you see your regular tax levy, the special tax levy is related to projections for the housing incentive program. Chad, if you'll go to the next slide, this is the general fund detail breakout, you are used to seeing that on one screen. This just shows you total general fund, estimated expenditures, and then each department or activity broken out. Next slide, please. This screen is showing you out of the general fund levy, how that, how that breakdown would look, so our police department is being supported by the levy coming in next with your public works department, fire department following that, and then you can see the rest of your funds. The police department expenditures are primarily made up of of salary. Okay, Chad, next slide, please. Here you'll see your parks and recreation detail organized by programs and then community funds and total estimated expenditures for your parks and recreation. Next slide, please, showing a similar breakdown out of the levy that has been scheduled for supporting the parks and recreation funds. You can see that municipal parks is coming in with the highest level of support, arena, organized recreation and then swimming pool next. Next slide, please. This is a condensed version of a chart that we have looked at over several of our budget meetings and discussions showing at eight percent. If we look in the middle line there at a residential homestead or home valued at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, an annual estimated city share of taxes would be seven seventy-six point six five. If you look at that as a monthly cost, you would be looking at sixty-four dollars and seventy-two cents. At the bottom of the screen, if you look at a commercial property valued at two hundred thousand, your annual city share of your property taxes is just under two thousand dollars. If you looked at that as a monthly cost, you're at one sixty-six fifty-nine. Next slide, please, Chad. And then what is your city tax levy paying for? Twenty-four seven police and fire protection, snow removal on your streets, alleys and public sidewalks, street cleaning, maintenance and repair, a building official and zoning administration, which includes our nuisance and junk ordinances, that includes making sure any projects are built to spec and safety standards, our parks and recreation opportunities for all ages. That might mean your swimming pool, that could mean a program, one of our facilities, our our parks. We have recently discussed, I believe, we are mowing about four hundred acres of green space in our community, access to a public library and access to a municipal airport. Next slide, please, shows our city levy and aid comparison dating back to two thousand eighteen on the far right, showing our proposed two thousand twenty-two there on the left. If you see in the center, you'll see total levy is bolded and levy increased, so in two thousand eighteen and nineteen, the city council adopted a five percent levy increase, followed by three and four percent, and then a proposed eight percent in twenty twenty-two. Below that, you will see our certified local government aid amounts, which on a previous slide we saw supports our general fund very heavily and is also supporting a portion of our improvement fund. And then at the very bottom, you can see how the LGA amounts have fluctuated over those years. And next slide, please. For every one dollar of city taxes that a citizen would pay, this is showing how that breaks out. So for every one dollar, twenty-eight cents of your dollar is going to support your general fund, eleven cents goes to support your library, sixty cents is supporting your parks and recreation programs and facilities, and one cent is supporting your airport. I do want to make a note here, our parks and rec fund is getting a larger support of our property tax dollars here on this breakout, but it's important to note that our local government aid is not supporting parks and rec fund where it is supporting our general fund. So that does skew that a little bit on how your property taxes are applied. Next slide, please, a different visual for you on that same breakdown, so general fund at twenty-eight percent, library at eleven, parks and rec at sixty percent and airport at one percent of our levy that is proposed for twenty twenty-two. And next slide, please, this is a revenue breakdown of our proposed twenty twenty-two budget. If we start at the purple, that's eighteen percent, which is the proposed city tax levy. In the blue are your non-tax receipts, which are going to include your water and wastewater revenues from your enterprise funds, license fees, permit fees, revenues that are coming in, I'm probably missing something. The bottom red is your reserves, that is what is scheduled, and you can tie that number back to the chart we looked at before to pull from reserves, that's a net. So that's the difference of what is scheduled to pull and what's scheduled to go in. And then in the green is your certified twenty twenty-two amount of local government aid at three point nine million, and that makes up twenty-nine percent of our revenues. Uh, next.
Question on the revenues, have we have we looked at some of those fees and stuff to see if they're, I mean, has taxes continued to go up over time, has some of these fees went up over time as well to kind of offset?
I would say from what what I have looked at in discussions with department heads, our fees probably have not changed appropriately with with the rest of, the cost of providing the programs, keeping the facilities open. That is one of the things we're going to be looking at in the first part of twenty twenty-two so that we can prepare some recommendations for you that will help then maybe close some of the gap for us in our twenty twenty-three budget.
Yeah, I look at the pie, I mean, you look at that, when you got the the green and the purple or whatever, is almost getting even with our income there, where we need to even that out a little bit to get it to under.
I think there will be opportunities, we certainly don't want to come in and raise something twenty-five percent or anything, but I think there's some opportunities that we can propose to you maybe for some steps that can slowly get us get us up maybe to a more appropriate fee schedule that helps us cover the cost of providing staff for our recreation activities and just maintaining and keeping the doors open at some of our facilities. Chad, next slide, please. This is showing a salary and benefit comparison, on the left you see a chart that's showing, so red is twenty twenty-one, blue is twenty twenty-two. The very top is showing a total compensation comparison, that is including wages, benefits, withholdings, our cost for employees, and then below that you see benefits and withholdings is the next category, other and then regular wages. On the right, you are seeing a compensation to total budget, the left two columns are twenty twenty-one. It is showing you that thirty-nine percent of the total budget was made up of wages in twenty twenty-one and that is, I'm sorry, compensation, that's the the full package there. On the right is twenty twenty-two, where forty-two percent of the budget is made up of compensation. And you will notice in twenty twenty-two, your total budget is down and wages are up, budget is down. One of the reasons is that we removed the campground, the Central Park campground grant revenue and grant expenditures were actually plugged into the parks and recreation budget, where it's most appropriate to have those in a grant fund and budget the cities match. So that does make up for a little bit, that was about one point three five million that we've adjusted more appropriately. So that does skew that a little bit and I think important to note. Um, next slide, please, Chad. This is looking at full-time budgeted employee count from the right, we started with two thousand three, on the far left under the blue header is two thousand twenty-two. If you'll notice in two thousand three, there was a total of sixty-three full-time budgeted employees, in two thousand twenty-two, we are proposing sixty-four. There's been some ups and downs through the years there. The notes at the bottom, in the twenty twenty-two budget, there's a community development director that's included. Also important to note, that is not a new expense, but was not considered one of our employees before because that expense was transferred over through the general fund to the CETA budget to help support the CETA executive director's salary. And then there is an IT technician included in the two thousand twenty-two budget in the information technology department. And I went ahead and added a note, in two thousand twenty, the parks pool manager was moved under the city budget and that's where that increase comes in. That was in two thousand twenty after the pool acquisition in mid-two thousand nineteen, I just thought that was important to note on there.
Amy, do we consider seasonal or part-time help or not?
I don't have them in this chart, actually, I was asked that question, I'm going to try to see if we can run some reports and show a comparison on what that's looked like over the years, but I do not have that included in this chart.
Fine, thank you.
Uh, Chad, will you go to the next slide for me? This is very hard to see, but I just did it for illustration purposes, so get your magnifying glasses out. This is the twenty twenty-two capital improvement budget, it is included in your agenda packets this evening and we will have this information available online in a much easier to read format. And the last slide, Chad, is just some contact information. My contact information, our finance director's contact information, if anyone watching or that is watching later has a question or wants to sit down or request information, that way they can get to that and we will be putting the truth and taxation presentation, which is this information plus a little bit more will be provided on our website, there is a recording of that on YouTube. So you will be able to direct people to that if you would like to. And then the resolution before you on this item is showing you your general fund revenue, your special tax levy. your special tax levy and your total levy, which can also be seen back. Chad, can you pull up that third slide again? Okay. A third. There we go. This resolution is reflecting your column under the regular tax levy, two million four seventy-nine two eighty-four. Your special levy, forty-four thousand one hundred, for a total of all levies of two million five twenty-three three eighty-four. And that is at that eight percent increase over last year's certified levy.
Okay, thank you, Amy.
Very good.
Further discussion?
Well, you know, all, all the way through this budget thing, I would like to have a seven percent. I would have. And I look at, you know, we talk about LGA and all this stuff, and what's going to happen in the city if we ever lose it? Well, part of LGA that the state gives us is to try and keep our property taxes as low as we can. And eight percent's not keeping it down there, you know? It, I look at, we've got a little over a million and a half in reserves right there. We talk about now we can spend twenty, just about twenty-five grand on a software program for, on a park and rec reserve. One levy is twenty-two to twenty-three thousand dollars, if I remember right. If you drop it even down to seven, one percent, it helps every homeowner, every business in town. And I don't think it's going to hurt us by doing that.
If you look at it, Tom, with those last five years, you went five percent, five percent.
And we, and we.
And you went. Just wait a second.
We have reserves every year.
Just wait a second. Then you went three percent.
Yep.
Four percent.
Yep.
Okay, that's seven percent. And with the eight here, that's fifteen. If you divide it out, it's like five across. You're just paying back what you tried to lighten up on the past couple of years, you know? So it's basically, we're staying at five, if you would have done it all the way along. And, and you know, and I was telling Amy, I said, you, you think of that, of the, you look at the price, what we're paying for our taxes, and then think about what you pay monthly for your internet and for your television. That's nothing near.
I figured mine out tonight, a hundred and ninety-eight dollars a month for my taxes.
For your taxes?
Your total taxes?
Yep.
Okay, that's important to make that distinction. Only the city share is controlled by this body.
I don't have any, any street assessments or anything on it, just what I get to ninety-eight for my taxes.
My taxes are up also, so is my valuation. And I opened my tax report and I laid it aside.
You had a number when you and I talked about that there's an average throughout the country or.
Yes.
About what tax, what people and communities are paying additionally over the years.
Yes, thank you, thank you for that reminder. I need to find it, and when I do, I will send it out to you. I believe the league issued some information that on average, the preliminary city tax levies are at six point eight percent in Minnesota. Now, of course, that's not everyone that's looking at it across the board. Change over the last, last year's preliminary, it came in at about six point eight percent. So just to put that kind of in perspective on where we are. And I, I did pull up our chart. So if, Tom, on a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, there's about a nine dollar annual difference between seven percent and eight percent.
Like I say, it's not going to save anybody a ton of money, but it benefits everybody in the city that's a homeowner or business owner. And I don't think it's going to break us.
My concern is like, you know, it's like, I don't think we, in two thousand twenty-one, that we had the accurate information we needed. I look at the last two years, we've been allowing budgets to go that weren't right, shortfalls in a lot of departments. And I mean, I'm not all for it as eight percent, but at the end of the day, we need to get this reconciled to cash flow. And it's like, you know, we had skewed numbers the last couple of years, and, you know, I think that was a mess. But at the end of the day, I think we need, in two thousand twenty-two, we, we need to work exceptionally hard as a group to, you know, find out things that, you know, work on different things, whether it's lobby or, uh, different resources to do some of the capital gains things even. I mean, I don't want to have a thirteen percent here because we want to do a lot of things either. But I, I think that in the, the skew of the last two years of, of bad numbers and, and concerns that we had no control over. I mean, I, I look at, this is catching up to, you know, your cost levy is three percent, and you know, we're, we're not going up three percent to the five percent average that we've usually had. And I think this is a, a good year to catch up and, and do that, you know? Nobody wants to have higher taxes, but, you know, everything's going up. I mean, look at the grocery store nowadays and this and that. And for us to run as a business, which we should be, I, I think we need to look at this. But I, I, on the same token, I think we really need to push in two thousand twenty-two to spend a lot of time on this. You'll have a full year under your belt. And I think we can get better, stronger and more tighter numbers and, and move on from that, is my opinion.
I agree with you, Steve. That's a, a good summary there. The timing is right. I think we have to move this forward.
Well, the, the, the thing is, is we all sat through the, the, the budgets for each department. And to, to me, that's the time, if, if we want to, if we want to cut the levy, we have to, we have to figure out a way to cut some of the expense items. So we can't say in the expense part of our process that, okay, we're going to have all these expenses. But then when it comes to the levy part of it, we can't say, okay, we want to go less because it, it just doesn't work that way. The, the money's got to come from somewhere.
I, I think we also not, need to not talk about arbitrary things like, oh, I want one percent difference. I think what we really need to be talking about is what are the needs to run this city the appropriate way? And also, how can we thoughtfully go forward in making sure that we're spending the ten dollars or a hundred dollars for the basic maintenance of some of these things versus a ten thousand dollars to replace it in three years? So I think it needs to be a larger conversation than just worrying about a percent, but also talk about how do we best run the city and how do we best serve our constituents in a thoughtful way? And I think it is fiscally responsible to be at eight percent if that means that we are making sure that we're maintaining the things we have and doing the services for our constituents. This isn't a business. This is a city, a municipality that is here to provide services for our constituents. And I understand the frustration of a nine dollar difference, Tom. But in the long run, and ultimately in the end, we need to set things right, and we need to do things right and go forward. And like what Steve said, yes, we do need to bond maybe for some of these larger items, which we all understand that Amy's direction is to make sure that we're looking at our facilities, seeing, see what needs to be done, looking at our, um, our, our staff that's working at the city and making sure that we are competitive and that we're keeping good people doing the right things. And so those things need to be accounted for when we're having these conversations and not just looking at, well, seven percent would make me feel better.
Well, it isn't that it's going to make me feel any better. It's, I look at our, our reserves too. Every year, we've taken out of our reserves to keep it down. But our reserves are always healthy. They're always healthy. They've been healthy for years.
Yeah, well, and.
And they keep, you know, I mean, every year they get built back up again, so.
Yeah, Tom, and.
More than we should.
And.
Yep.
We've had to reconcile a lot of things. So you say your reserves have been healthy for the last two years, but you really haven't known that, right? Because we're reconciling what's been going on. So taking that into account as well needs to be considered.
And I do, I would always caution, one, we have a fund balance reserve policy, and I don't know how that's been applied in the past. But I do know at the end of this year, we're going to be running calculations and making specific recommendations to you on assigning some specific reserves for some two thousand twenty-two expenses that will not have to hit the budget. We are working on two, with two firms right now, to develop quotes for us on what it will cost to have them go through and do a facilities evaluation and help us understand what our needs are and help us plan as a, as a body and a staff, how we fund that? Do we bond and do everything? Do you bond and do some? Do you have money in reserves? Without that data, we don't, we don't know that yet. There's a lot of work that we'll be doing in the first half of next year so that we have some information to work with as we go into that next set of budget discussions. I don't like eight percent either. I don't like my tax statement I just got in the mail. My valuation is up on my home. My Otter Tail, my Otter Tail bill just went up. I'm on level pay. I, I get it, I really do.
That's the thing, it seems like everything was going up, and I mean, other, other people's wages.
But that's also true for the city.
To me, it's a good deal.
Your city expenses are going up also.
Sure they are.
If Otter Tail is charging me more, they're charging us more to run our arena and our swimming pool. We are asking our staff to do more, do better, clean the streets better, have more events at CSC, have a perfect set of lifeguards and swimming lessons at our pool. Guess what that means? Resources. That either means time, that means creating efficiencies somewhere and finding better ways to do things. That might mean equipment, that might mean new software systems. But to do more and offer more and offer better doesn't happen for nothing. And we're going to have to make some priority decisions. But we have a snow event and two motor graders broke down, broke down. It, I think Brandon told me it takes four swipes with a plow truck and what you can do with one swipe on a grader. It's four times the amount of work because we had equipment we didn't maintain, or we just held on to it until it, it broke down in a big, our first big snow event. And that also meant they were back out on the streets again, redoing intersections where the plow trucks just didn't do the work right. So it is not my intention or wish or desire that I hope we never have to see an eight percent levy increase again. But I think our infrastructure, I want to give you an example. I was trying to attend a Zoom meeting. That's pretty common these days. Some of the members of this body do it when we have a meeting. Me attending a Zoom meeting and showing video and voice crashed our whole internet service down here at City Hall. We are not up to speed even to run our own equipment and provide something that's very common these days in our environment, in our, in our COVID or post-COVID world. We have residential-grade modems here that runs our police systems, our public safety, that's running our registration system. We could have the best registration system ever, and if you can't get your computers to connect to the internet, there's a lot of things we have to fix this year, and I hope we can get them fixed. It's my intention to run as lean as possible in two thousand twenty-two. I hope twenty-one and two serve as a much better baseline for us going forward than maybe some of the budget information that, that I had to use to develop this. Also, with all due respect, this body did give a consensus to move forward with eight percent, and that is what we did, and that is what is before you. And I ask you to approve the amount that you asked consensus to prepare for you.
Well, I think one of the things that have happened here is that we've got more information than we've ever had, and we have to take a hard look at it. I appreciate Ryan, you and Amy's hard work that you have done already. I mean, there's a lot of things there that we've never seen before. And I've only been a councilman for three years, but I really appreciate that work that you're doing, you and Ryan.
And I want to, I would also like to commend the department heads also. Some that aren't even with us anymore and some that came in to a brand-new process. A lot of work and hours have been spent around my desk, around the conference room table, just going through and through and through those budgets and trying to put the most realistic proposal before you to get us going right through twenty-two and start stabilizing some things and getting a good baseline.
And this will help us in our decision-making process.
I certainly hope so.
The other thing I like, you know, is that we talked about already, is, is being able to stay up on it now so we get, you know, that month's information the following month so we can stay with it.
Yes.
You know, to make our decision, like I said, this was a terrible year to, to try to figure out the budget because you had no numbers there to go by. You had the basics, and that was it, and you need more than the basics too. I know you had them, but they were skewed, and I, and I understand that. But I really looking forward to be able to look at that in January stuff in February and say, okay, this is where we are year-to-date. And, and it'd make our job way easier. Because I mean, that's how I followed us the last eight years I've been on here, is that's what you got to go by. If those numbers are skewed, you know, you, you, you can't do your job. And I think I'm hoping in two thousand twenty-two that we got good solid numbers and makes our job a lot easier.
Further discussion? There ain't none. Can I roll call, please?
Charity?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Flat?
Aye.
Bedrun?
Nay.
Melby?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item eight point zero seven is a resolution adopting a five-year capital improvement plan for years two thousand twenty-two through two thousand twenty-six, Your Honor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Don't make that motion, Your Honor.
Second, Your Honor.
Thank you, Clayton and Dawn, thank you. Discussion?
Yeah, I got a couple here. Tim, you know, we got the, for twenty-three on this five, the only reason bringing this up on our five-year capital plan. Seems like in the past, you know, we'd come up with something while I was in the plan, we got to purchase it. You got that outside message, message board again?
Oh.
Where are you planning on putting that?
Outside of the board.
Okay. Last time when we were going to do that, then there was people that said that's not a good idea. And you got people turning on to seventy-five, and now they're trying to read that board and drive and, and stuff. I, I almost think that's something we should just forget.
And that's something that I keep kicking down. And technology has changed. I was going to talk to our IT guy and stuff. That's why I keep kicking that shit on the road.
Yes.
You know, and most of some of the things, Ken.
Is there a way to take that off the capital improvement plan and, and just bring it up whenever, you know?
I, I would, I, I hear all of those concerns, and I think those are all very relevant and important things to talk about. But it, I also am not sure I would encourage taking it completely off. Anything on your capital improvement plan in your two thousand twenty-two year, you should see reflected in your budget. So if that for some reason doesn't make it in twenty-three, I think during that, that actual budget development is when we may determine to remove that versus now. It's, it's hard to keep track of things if they're not in front of you. That would be my recommendation. It is not impacting this, the budget that we have for two thousand twenty-two.
No, and I, I guess I would, you know, if you want to keep that money in or something, I'd rather see you put it toward that, that airboat or whatever it is that you've got, you know? It just, it just seemed like there was too many negatives to put it on that side of the building when they, when we thought about it last time.
Like Amy said, those are things that are kind of on a wish list, whether they will make it through the budget cycle that year.
As long, as long as they don't come up as well, it was in there, we're going to buy that.
Nothing, nothing is on the budget that is not approved by the members of this city council.
My understanding is this is just a proposal, correct? And it is upon the budget year that we're voting?
Yes, well, yes. And you're looking at a, a five-year capital plan to better understand maybe some long-term needs. But the two thousand twenty-three, they don't, they will not automatically roll into the budget without some further discussion and evaluation in that budget cycle.
Five, five-year capital, it's a moving target from year to year.
Right, right.
I mean, it's there, it's, um, it's kind of like with the airport, you know, with Mint or.
FMA.
The federal and, and that, I mean, we put them in there, just keep them in there, so.
Yeah. And there are certain grant opportunities that require you, especially with the airport. But if it's not on your, on your capital plan, it may not even be an option to discuss. So there, there are, there's some value in, in having things out there, even if there's further development. A lot of times, we're going to have to go back even and get some additional quotes if it's out a few years. As we know, materials, prices and things are changing.
Technically, I mean, it's a four-year plan because it should be, but the twenty-two is already in there. So it's one of those things that, and it should be changeable, you know, and it is interchangeable. And nobody knows it's going to happen in five years, but.
Right.
Like I said, it goes back to the bonding thing and different deals where it does give you a good forecast to say, boy, it's going to cost a lot of money in two thousand twenty-five, we need to have a plan for that or whatever. I think it's a good, good system.
Further discussion? There ain't none. Can I roll call, please?
Charity?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Flat?
Aye.
Bedrun?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item eight point zero eight is a resolution adopting the two thousand twenty-two budget, Your Honor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Thanks, Delane. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clayton, thank you. Discussion? There ain't none. Can I roll call, please?
Charity?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Flack?
Aye.
Bedbrun?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 8.09 is a summary on the closed meeting from the special city council agenda on November 29th, 2021, Your Honor.
Thank you. Ashley, I think I'm gonna have our city attorney, Corky, to come up and read the summary of the special council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the council. This is a summary of the special council meeting held on November 29th, 2021. Significant discussion was had with respect to each of the following. One, city administrator oversees and coordinates the operation of all departments and programs. Overall, the city administrator is doing an effective and very good job creating a team atmosphere. The city administrator is very competent in coordinating all departments and city operations and processes. The city administrator does a great job with staff who appreciate the professional and friendly workplace atmosphere. The city administrator has operations and procedures running much more smoothly. The city administrator has excellent decision-making qualities and implements them with respect to staff, department heads, and those she has hired. The city administrator may need to let department heads do more so that she does not burn out from all that she does. The city administrator may need to delegate more. Goal number one, the city administrator may need to involve the city council more in the identification of city concerns, citizen concerns, as well as track and report to the council resolution and results obtained. The city administrator should create a process to implement this goal and to lead the discussion with the council with respect to community issues. The city administrator should involve department heads in the city administrator's evaluation process. Two, keeps council informed of financial conditions and makes appropriate recommendations. The city administrator came into a mess. She had significant impact and assisted in the implementation of a new and better budget process and procedures. The city administrator seeks to get it right and wants to provide accurate information and figures. Goal number two, the city administrator will initiate the budget process earlier and provide to council and department heads monthly to date, to date revenue and expenditure figures which are accurate. The city administrator has attempted to implement these process and procedures. Three, responds to concerns, issues, and questions of public concern and presents alternatives to council. The city administrator is doing a great job providing informational memos to the city council prior to council meetings. There is a question as to the appropriate level of the city council's involvement and knowledge as well, as well as resolution of the day-to-day citizen complaints. Who should directly respond to citizen day-to-day complaints was a significant component of the city administrator evaluation process. Goal number three, the city administrator should implement strategy sessions with department heads to continue to create and improve policies and procedures which respond to public concerns, including housing, communication, complaints, and facility studies. The city administrator should come to the city council with any concerns she has. Summary, the city administrator is very prudent and a great liaison who unifies various, various community groups and civic organizations. The city administrator has done a great job with decision-making on a variety of issues. The city administrator does everything she can do in a day. She is a great leader overall and answers questions in a timely manner. She is doing a great job responding when she has time to review, research, and provide answers to inquiries. She answers questions well. Overall, she meets or exceeds the 13 standards by which we have evaluated her.
Thank you, Corky. Uh, I guess it was information-only, just summary being read. It couldn't seem fair.
Yep.
Pretty good about it?
Item.
Okay, thank you.
Item 8.10 is a resolution to approve the city administrator's annual salary, Your Honor.
I do have a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you. Delane, is there a second? By. Dawn, thank you. Discussion. Um, this was really never discussed at our closed session, uh, as far as a possible pay increase, cost of living, percentage. I guess it's kind of what we wanna do if.
Is there a precedent set?
Usually a me too, isn't it? It's whatever you settle with, ask me.
Normally, that's what it is, yeah. They go settle for 2% that year, they, the administrator got 2% or 3% or whatever they end up settling on.
Do we have that, that number?
Uh, no.
Yes, I do. AFSMI is at 2.5%.
2.5.
Is there any, has there ever been like merit increases, like, I know having worked at multiple institutions, like depending on like where you hit, if you were like below expectations, meet expectations, or exceed, you had anywhere from 1 to 5%? I, I just am curious if.
You know, it's I don't mean this in a negative way, but it's been kind of a revolving door with the city administrators. We really never they haven't been here long enough to justify, you know, a cost of living or a jump in salary. I mean, maybe.
Your Honor, if I can, I, I remember when, you know, certain administrators had different qualifications that maybe weren't uh, fully qualified, and as they were doing some educational things, they were hitting you know, steps type of thing as that, uh, with the education, and then that warranted more on the salary side. I don't even know what she's making, to tell you the truth. I mean, it's, um, I propose that we do what they have done, is, is go what they ask me and, and increase it.
I, I think it should somewhat be tied to, to the um, evaluations that we give. I mean, maybe the baseline of meeting expectation is say, two and a half, and then it should go either up or down based on our evaluation.
But that's not what you do for the rest of your employees, and that's pretty hard to really do.
I really, I, I really don't wanna weigh in too much here, but your AFSMI contract does not have merit. So that's, you have cost of living in your union contract. So if, if you're discussing merit, you're gonna have to discuss that separately from your, your AFSMI union contract.
And that's why we separated, uh, we, we didn't have the administrator sit in negotiations, as a simple fact, because they got the same thing that they're going for, so they're going for 4%, settled at 2.5%. You know, the, the person that was in there fighting for that or whatever would want the 4% of course, and as anybody would, and so that's why it's one of those things, I know, Sean, we didn't do that, we had him bypass that, but now having her in there, I think you need the administrator, and then when we do those negotiations and I guess, you know, the percent-wise, you know, I think it ties into the budget better if you try to match that same increase. Um, you know, whether we throw something in there next year or whatever, but even budget-wise, you know, how much, you know, can you go up now in the budget without, you know, being an issue too?
I know, like, like with Cheetah, what we used to do out there, because Craig at the time was the highest city employee or whatever you wanna call him, there was, and the workers got kind of followed by was what the city did for everybody else, but with him, we gave a dollar amount. Like we said, you were the highest-paid employee in the, in the city to give a, to give a percentage. You're making a hundred thousand and somebody else is making 40, you get a pretty good raise, you know, so we gave him a dollar amount rather than a percentage amount. And I think his dollar amount usually was like fifteen hundred dollars. Each year, or you know, your raise on it.
Would anybody be interested in like, you know, we have, don't have much time with this, but I, you know, I'd like to have Dale throw out some numbers that say, this is what she makes, this is what 2% would be, this would 3%. You know, whether it's a dollar amount, I mean, it's one of those things that, I don't think it'd be fair to her or us to make a decision, all of a sudden, you know, we, we have a couple of days to think about it. Back, came out Friday, but and today, I'd like to have some, some figures in front of me saying this is, you know, options that we could do and bring it on the 27th and get it done.
I think, I think it needs to be somewhat formatted based on evaluation.
Yes.
You have to, I mean, you have to incentivize for doing a better job.
Yep.
So I mean, it, it just, just cannot, it's just the way it works, I, I feel. Just my opinion.
I, I would agree with you, Delane, and I think, you know, Mr. Mayor, if there would be something where you could say maybe um, if you don't meet expectations, there's no raise, maybe, maybe the middle ground would be whatever AFSMI was given that year. And then maybe if there was like meets or exceeds expectations, then it would go up to 5%. You know, but having something that we have that's standardized across the board, I think is only fair. So Amy knows where she is and how that is, and it isn't this random number that's given out every year.
Yeah.
But to formalize it and say, this is what.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think we can just be wishy-wash for year to year and say, okay, I just feel like we should do this. I mean, I think that we should have something consistent. Something to shoot for every year and, I mean.
Yeah, I'll, I apologize. I, you know, we really couldn't discuss salary anything at the closed session. We never did uh, discuss options, I'll apologize for that, but I will uh, kind of bring, bring a break, breakdown on the 20s.
Do we need to have another closed session just to discuss this and get over the hump and figure?
I don't.
Corky?
I was on my way out.
Yes, if you are to discuss salary, it can be done in a closed session.
Okay.
You cannot decide the salary, but you can discuss as you are discussing here in a closed session, criteria. What does the evaluation process bring, and you can discuss ranges.
Can you discuss that in a ways and means at all? Um, like here or, or can we just discuss it here without a closed session?
You can discuss it here as you are doing now. A closed session is also permissible so that you can speak, as long as you need to, as broadly as you need to, and in fact, our office would be in a position to create some of the information that you wanted, present salary, percentages. Uh, one of the factors that could be discussed is the fact that this administrator did in fact assume interim leadership of Cheetah. That's been a factor in the past, was not done so this year. We can create that data and you can have a closed session to do that.
I mean, is it possible to have a closed session right after this council meeting, just uh?
You have to have it.
No, it is not. You need to give proper notice to the public, and you need to indicate under what particular statute you are acting. Um.
And you don't, we don't have the stuff in front of us that we're gonna need percentage-wise.
We could have that meeting just prior to the next council meeting too, if you want to do it all in one night and not have two nights.
I like that idea.
I, I, I like that.
And it would be.
It would be nice if we got some pertinent information sent to us.
Yep.
And then have the meeting, say at 6 o'clock on the 28th.
27th.
7th.
Yep.
I think it would be in our best interest to make this something standardized across the board going forward as people come and go.
Sure.
So um, it's not something that is specific to any particular person.
And we do, in our office, we do have the contract under which Amy was employed, and we can create that information for you, and we'll do it at various levels, and so you'll have that in front of you, if that's acceptable to all of you.
Yeah.
So if we get it soon enough, so if we have any other questions, then we could get them, get the information before that.
You will have it before next Monday.
So what do we do?
Which is the 20th.
To the week before that.
Yes.
No, and I'm saying that gives us time if we have other questions to get information.
And in fact, I will tell you that I will attempt to get it to you before the end of the week.
I would make a motion to table this until uh,
So, well.
meeting end.
Right, well, uh.
Can we have a motion to do that? I guess we can. We'll have to redact. Table this uh, motion.
So.
Who, who?
Would they have to amend?
Amend their motion.
Exactly. You already have a motion in front of you. You'll have to amend that. It would be most appropriate if each of the, the motioner and the second withdrew that and you amend a motion.
I would, I withdraw my motion.
And.
And then Dawn.
Dawn.
I will, I will withdraw my motion.
So we have a motion to amend.
Yep, right.
Make that motion.
Second.
So then you're. To table.
Sounds good.
Roll call.
Charity?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Flack?
Aye.
Bedbrun?
Aye.
Melby?
You got a little quick. Did it have in there, like, in the motion saying it's table till the 27th?
I'm gonna ask for a closed session on 20th.
Well, when you, when you ask to table something, you don't have to put a specific date or time or whatever you're gonna.
Till the next meeting.
You do not have to set a specific time, but most often it is. A motion to table can be brought up at any time in the future at a meeting of the entire body, but you can set a specific time.
And I do vote aye.
Okay.
I'll stay.
So we'll set up a closed session prior to the next council meeting?
6 o'clock somehow.
6 o'clock on the 27th. And we'll uh, so you just meet up in the upstairs?
Probably be easier for.
Right.
And we'll have to note that because we wanna have that in the uh, notice of the closed session where it will be held.
Okay.
And then do we decide at, at our council meeting then?
We'll get the salary she's making and be pending on percentages at meet expectations, exceeds, you know, 2%.
Hopefully, everybody gets any questions to you or Corky before that, so we have.
Right.
Like I say, I'll temp for Friday, but no later than Monday. And if you get an email with an unknown number over the weekend, it's probably for me.
All right, thank you. Uh, reports. Amy.
Thank you. I've got a couple things. Um, one, I, I wanted to just make a comment that specifically speaking about the um, the software that we talked about today for Parks and Rec, but we have five new um, department heads since I've come. And while there are challenges with that for them and me and us, there's also some really good things that can come out of that, and that's just different eyes looking at some of our processes and, and um, resources that we have in place. And it's kind of exciting to start to get to talk about how we can do things better and be a better crookston and serve our community and our citizens better, and so I, I thank our department heads just for um, being willing to think through those things and, and get up here in front of you and the community and propose those things. That's not always easy to do. Um, but I appreciate that they're willing to do that when they think it's important for us to provide better service. Okay, let me get through my, I wanna give just a little heads up, and we'll have more information coming, but after the um, census data is out, we will have to look at redistricting our wards. We are in the process at the staff level right now of pulling down um, the census population data. First step will be understanding population within each ward as they exist today, the ward boundaries. And then it will be our job to make some proposals for you. Um, I would also like to see some public input, maybe some meetings um, on how that could look if the lines needed to be shifted. The goal is to make sure that population is evenly distributed um, throughout each ward. So that will be coming. And you may hear about that. We just attended a webinar, so I wanted you to know we are working on that, and then we will start scheduling some time with you to discuss and also allow some opportunity for public input if there is any, or just some public education as well. Okay, all right. In my um, evaluation discussion, there was a goal that was developed about kind of gathering information that comes through from you, um, from citizens. Reporting, recording it, delegating it, resolving it, and bringing it back to you. So there's a couple things that we have. So there's a couple things that we have run into that's maybe a challenge, and one of those is being how specific to be when reporting it out. One of my concerns is, I've got a couple things I wanna report to you. I'm gonna be general as far as, like, telling you what ward it comes out of, but I don't want to be disrespectful to any individual citizen or take away their right to be properly notified and allowed the timeline that everyone else would have to either comply or not. But we don't sit up here generally speaking and, and alert the public in this way if someone doesn't meet and maybe has issued a citation, so I'm gonna try to generally describe for you, but there are gonna be times, I'm gonna be careful so as not to personally identify anyone while we're still working through the process. Um, I will say, mostly the things we get, um, through are, a lot of times it's nuisance, um, ordinance things like junk in people's yards, maybe vehicles, those types of things. So I have two for you that have come in. Um, one was a report from Ward Four. There was a property that has, appears to be unsecured, and, um, it, it doesn't look like it's occupied right now, so we are working through proper channels. There are specifics about when and why and how and who can do a walkthrough of a property, but, um, there has been attempted contact informally with the property owner, and if a response is not received in that way, we will move to a more official, a written notice with some timelines attached to comply and those things, so I wanted to let you know on that. Um, there's a second one, and this one came in a little while ago, but I'm gonna go ahead and, and report on it. It was, um, a property in Ward Three, um, which was for excessive junk in a yard, and that is kind of a tough one under our current ordinances and something we've been discussing in our department head meetings. Sometimes it's tough to apply the junk ordinance when it maybe is really just storing things in your yard. So we have to be careful that we're actually complying with our own definition as it stands today about what junk or excessive junk is, but, I mean, this case, um, there has been a formal process to notify the property owner, which a timeline is given for them to comply and meet, meet the requests in that notification. If that timeline lapses and this property owner has not complied, it will be followed by, um, a citation. So just wanted to update you on those, and I will try to work through these and give you information that, um, is helpful to you, but that doesn't maybe, um, personally identify anyone, any one particular.
Thank you, thank you for that update. Um, is, is our, do, do you feel our code in regards to stuff like this on junk on people's property and stuff like that? Does that seem to be, I, I mean, are we, are we too lenient? Is there so, I mean, I, I know there's a line there when it comes to people's personal property, what you can and can't do.
Right.
But then also there's, there's unsightly type of, maybe Corky can.
I think.
This was just gone, gone over not too long ago, and this is legality that we had a problem with.
So, one, I would say, you want the process to issue a citation for someone for what they have on their personal property to be, to be lengthy, to be stringent. I mean, you don't want, uh, a city to be able to come and s, give you a citation because your neighbor doesn't like your kid's tricycle in your yard, you know? And there is that. We know that that, that happens sometimes. Our job as staff and as a governing body is to make sure that our code has things defined properly and that our codes are updated when necessary. Um, I personally think we have a little bit of work that we can do on that. I, I believe that our, our fire chief and our building official would, um, agree with that, that sometimes our codes are hard to enforce simply because they're not written real clearly, um, and we have to make some judgment calls. I think it's typically best to err on the side of the citizen if you're not sure if something qualifies, so there's some work that we can do to help ourselves, to help, um, citizens that do have a complaint, help us, um, enforce those codes. So that's, Corky may have something to add to that.
Yes, um, we have been attempting to work on with the police department, the building, public officials, the fire department, on reviewing and amending proposed amendments for your consideration with respect to exactly those issues. Um, the codes that we operate under now were drafted a long time ago, and they don't involve some of the issues we have now and some of the issues with property owners who just abandon property, and that makes it much more difficult. Um, you can send out notices all you want, but if nobody receives them or they fail to acknowledge, then you involve administrative processes, you get search warrants, administrative warrants to entry. So we're trying to look at how we can streamline that, but still recognize individual rights of property owners, and we are working on that.
Thank you.
That was all I have.
Thank you, Amy. Uh, we'll start with Brandon, I think there's a few snow questions.
He's really surprised that you guys wanna know about the snow.
Thank you, Brandon, for everything you do.
Here's one.
I'll start with the water, the easy ones. Uh, so they started sandblasting the filters, they got the first filter blasted and they paint, put their first coat of paint on the filter, um, Sunday. We've had two hundred customers sign up so far for the customer portal, so Lynn's been helping some people that have been struggling with it a little bit, but the, it's about ten percent, so we got a good start there, so. Uh, on to snow, like Amy said, both motor graders broke down on our first snow removal, the one that had a weak engine let out on us already, and the second one had alternator issues, so, um, we lost both of our motor graders in the first two hours of that snow cleaning. It took us about twelve hours to get through everything once we were without the, without the graders. Um, I'm looking into, with the one being permanently out, we're trying to find something to rent for the rest of winter to get us to when our, uh, grader comes in, in the summer. Like Amy said, it just, on your main pass, you need graders to, to get, uh, to get through them faster and, and to remove some of the pack snow. Our plows that we have on our trucks are, they don't have any, uh, cutting-edge pressure on them, they're just gravity, so wherever it floats, that's where it cuts, so. That's why our, um, main trails are a little bit heavier with compacted snow this time. Um, they were out, uh, scraping, so the worst area was kind of in that northeast corner, the Walsh Alex. Um, we did Barrett and North Central when it warmed up last week, so, um, they're gonna try, they, they got that northeast corner pretty good, they went down Main. Um, they're gonna go down to the Woods Edition tomorrow, and then we'll check. I didn't get time to go to the south end today, but we'll look at the south end. Um, so, we're gonna try, it's gonna be warm tomorrow, we're gonna get as much as we can. Uh, we got one of the water guys coming behind them with a snow blower to ke, clean driveway since it's a little bit heavier snow, and our heavier snow blowers can move it a little bit better than the residential snow blowers, and I, I would like to do that in the future, you know, when we, when we make our first pass, it's not possible, send a snow blower behind and clean every driveway out, it would take us a week and a half, but when we're picking away at, at streets like we are right now, we can keep up with the blower to help clean the driveways. Um, I, there's been a few questions on weekend plowing, it's, uh, uh, you know, it's, might have the perception of when I sent people out that I was trying to avoid paying overtime. Um, I had that with, I, I know I've been beaten this with a dead horse, but, you know, we got, we have four guys that are within their first year here of employment. I've, I didn't feel comfortable splitting the crew. I wanted everybody coming in for their first snow event with the supervisor, Dave Lassard, there, so that when we had questions, issues, uh, he was, you know, he's been here a long time, he's, 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 he's the answer to a lot of the snow plowing questions and the issues, so it, if I could go back, uh, you know, I, I think I probably would've sent him out at noon on Sunday and then dealt, dealt with the blue, blow snow with, uh, you know, maybe some sewer department guys helping out with the plow. And I'm gonna try and keep the guys no more than twelve-hour shifts, you know, I, anything over twelve hours isn't safe, you know, I've, we've, we went through that with Water Main Brakes back in the day where we would work twenty-four hours straight. You know, when you get past twenty, eighteen, twenty hours, you're a zombie, and it's just asking for people to get hurt. Um, I guess I've, I'm, I'm gonna, what I would like to do is get four of our guys, just because graders are so much, there's, there, the efficiency of a grader is so much better than the plows. I would like to get four guys trained in the motor grader so that, let's just say we send somebody in eight, two guys in eight hours before, and then, um, they can both run the grader, and we can get, we'll just say sixteen hours out of two motor graders rather than twelve. Um, I'm working through it, me and Dave are talking a lot, we're, uh, we're try, we're trying to, we're trying to come up with the best, uh, fix for this. I, I know the outcome of this storm wasn't ideal, but, um, we're working forward, so.
Would it be, you know, advantageous to us to put, uh, bottom scrapers on our trucks?
Yep, and that's, you know, we have a, uh, I would like to see wings on it, maybe not all our trucks, but I would like to see a belly scraper and a, and a wing on our next truck. Um, you know, the Lowell has one at the, at the airport, um, when we have a storm that looks like we can tinker with it a little bit and see how it works on different streets, we're gonna, he said we could come and grab it and, you know, we'll get a feel for how that truck works, but, you know, if you gotta, our trucks have, like, a ten-foot plow on it, and if you throw a ten, twelve-foot wing on it, you're, you're, you're probably gonna get the street done in, you know, one and a half passes, 'cause once you've come back for your second pass with the plows we have right now, you can only take at best a three-quarter plow width, 'cause otherwise it'll push off your close side, so, yeah, that's, I, I think we need to look at some different equipment and, you know, ideal world, we would have three graders, but we don't have shed space for three graders either. I, I would like to see what would happen with some, with, with our, you know, twenty-three in our capital improvement plan, we have, uh, another plow truck, so, um, I was gonna talk to Grand Forks and Thief River and other cities and see exactly what they're using and what they like and what they don't like, so.
So, on, on our graders, um, what do we do for maintenance on them, like, you know, farmers when they getting ready for a big harvest season, they take their stuff in and make sure it's ready to go? I mean, what, what else do our graders get used for other than snow throughout the summer?
Uh, you know, they get he, they use heavier in the, in the wintertime for snow removal, and then we grade roads essentially in the summer time.
So I mean, is there, is it, I mean, do we take them into, like, Ziegler or something and have them go through it and, and see what's, you know, what we could do and stuff like that to prepare better maybe for winter?
Yep, I can, I, I, I would think that would be a good idea, I can look into it and see what, uh, preventative maintenance, uh, like, every, probably fall before the snow comes would be a good timeframe.
Brandon, is there anything that we're, we could've done to maybe not have avoided the issue with both our graders?
Um.
Can I chime in?
Yeah.
Yes, not be running one that was barely hanging on, and we knew that. I mean, that one has had trouble, right? That's the one you spoke of when he presented the purchase of the other one, we knew, and I'm gonna let you jump back in, but Brandon has talked about not running them down that far where there's still some value for a trade-in. Um, okay, I'm done, I'll let you go back now, thank you.
Yeah, I, you know, if, that, that, the grader that blew up the second time, it, it was already rebuilt five years ago, so, um, you know, just not running them into the ground essentially, I think will prevent, you know, it, it's machinery and it's, it work on a heavy issues, I would hope we never have two machines that are under five thousand, six thousand hours that go down at the same time.
And, and you're probably gonna discuss this, but I, I just wanna know if there's, um, do we have snow, emergency snow routes designated within Crookston?
Um, there's not a, a formal emergency route, they have to be signed, and, uh, you know, I talked to Pat about it a little bit, you know, essentially the, you know, this, what Pat considered his emergency route was the state aid roads, so, um.
I mean, I think, and we can discuss this as a body, but I mean, I think we should probably designate some emergency snow routes so emergency vehicles can get around in a major snow event without having to give you a call and say, hey, I need to get up here. I mean, I think the major thoroughfare should be, you know, even in the middle of a blizzard, plowed out regularly so people can move around.
And I've had a couple conversations with the maintenance staff at the Villa and, um, I've, I've, well, I'm, I'm gonna put together a similar map to what I had for, like, the road construction to where, um, you know, we'll say the green roads are the emergency route and, uh, purple are the, we'll say, state aid, so we'll clear the emergency route first and then move on to the state aids and then do all the smaller residential roads after that. Um, you know, it's part of, part, you know, we ma, we even missed a couple streets this time just with the new staff. Um, there was a block, a block or two of Walsh that just got overlooked and a couple of dead-end gravel roads, and we went back the next day and, and got them, but that's, you know, I, I also feel like we need to, you know, to get away from the constant turnover, I, I think we have to look at our wages. We, we're, we're trying to get people to come in to a CDL job at nineteen dollars an hour, you know, it's, we're, we're helping people get their CDL and then they're going to work, uh, we get them their CDL and they're going to work a twenty-five, thirty-dollar-an-hour job. It's, uh.
That is, that is a challenge in my industry as well, so I mean, a CDL driver at nineteen, you're training them, but you're not retaining them, so that's, that's the challenge that you have then, and.
And it's, it hasn't, I know it's a really hot topic right now, everybody's having trouble with people. This has been an issue for the city for, I would say, at least five years. You know, we've been getting one or two applicants for positions for as long as I can remember. You know, it's, we, 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 you know, we, we have a good group of, of, of guys in the, in the street mains and, and I'm not, our, our water guys, our sewer guys are good, too. Uh, we got, we got good people, um, we just need to find a way to keep them, and, you know, it's, i, if we can get it to the point where me and Dave aren't having to sit and ride around in a plow truck with a guy for a day, um, and, and there's four of them, so you take four days away from Dave being able to go do his route, it's just, it, there's no, there's no upfront, in-your-face costs of the, of the turnover, but it's costing us money, so.
Will that be part of the study? Weren't you saying that you were gonna look at wages and wage studies and compensation?
Yes, yes, we are, and yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and we will, um, each department head will weigh in. I am certainly not an expert on CDL drivers or running a snow plow, but each of our department heads will weigh in on our job descriptions, and I am hoping, um, at the end of this year to recommend a transfer, um, of some reserve dollars that would help us pay for a, a formal wage study. The League of, um, Minnesota Cities provides a list of, of firms that, that do that, so there's a number, and then they also provide a process to put a request for proposals out. Um, the benefit of having someone help you do that is the speed at which you can do it. Um, if we do it internally as a staff, it is very unlikely that we could have anything completed in time to talk for budget time, and that would be our goal, um, to do that.
I mean, is it unheard of to subcontract in, in situations like that when we are having staffing issues to say, hey, we got a major snow event, we don't have the staff to get it done the way-
We don't have the staff to get it done the way our citizens want. And we have some people in town here that can probably help us out. Now granted, it's not gonna be probably as cheap as we'd like, but we'd at least be able to have an option.
It's in our it's.
Talking about too, Brandon, you might be able to know, but I just I know what things that happen out to college and stuff are eh finding people that can actually do that job. I mean, it's like anywhere else, finding people to do it is tough because not only do they already have their contracts, but they're having a hard time finding people working for them too. So it it's it's a tough situation when you're talking contracting eh unless you do it in, you know, maybe two years down the road from now. Would you maybe be able to, but calling somebody, say now, cause we have a problem, you're gonna have a hard time finding anybody.
I would agree with that.
Is that a union thing too then?
It's.
Yeah, I was gonna ask that.
Probably gonna be a union issue too.
Is there a union issue?
It is in our it is in our policy to eh to bring in contractors in snow events that eh are substantial. I as far as you did goes, I I I would guess, yes, but.
Well, we have, I mean, as a city, we have the responsibility to, I mean, we just talked about an eight percent levy tonight and what our what our citizens expect from us as a city to do for them. So if we don't have the staff, then we need to figure out a way, you know, and that can't, you know, and I and I understand the union concept of it, but we still have to do what we need to do to keep the streets cleaned.
Yeah, no.
Then you run into the union problem, even with raising wages, that all becomes a union issue that you have to work through.
But you know, you're 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 not talking, this is something that doesn't happen very often.
Right.
I mean, this intense and and yeah. And you know, back in the day, they used to have, how many of these farmers that would say, oh, hey, you give us a call, we'll come and haul snow? You know, and and they would come in and you got an extra six trucks. And you keep feeding them trucks with and they're bigger trucks than what our little things are. Uh you move a lot of snow in a short time and I think the citizens would like that. I think, you know, to get the major part of it, if you could find some money, if you advertise, I mean, they come in as independent contractors. So you're just you're hiring them as a a truck and a man. And they're if they're just hauling the snow out, I mean, I think that's an option that maybe you should talk about or talk with your help there and see. Um I know for a typical snow, you're not gonna do that.
Right.
But like you said, on a snow event, we have the option to do that.
Two graders down, I mean, there's just stuff that happens that outside, maybe outside of our control, that we need to have contingencies for, I think.
Yeah. Any business would, you wouldn't, you know, you gotta have a a backup. You're only as good as your backup.
Right.
You know, Brandon, when you talk about, you know, if they get a CDL and they move on, do you have like a step increase type thing then? Okay, so they get their CDL, then it goes up so much or or how do we? Cause that's about the only way you're gonna really do that is through step increases, cause you can't you can't just give somebody a raise under under the union contracts.
Yeah, it's I mean, our we're looking for a minimum requirement of eh CDL coming in the door. With with the wage that we're offering, we we just can't get that. You know, once once they get their CDL, there's you know, I have a timeframe to, you know. What I've told the guys is after a year with with satisfactory or above satisfactory reviews, they would get moved up to the MS two. And then depending on how their progression goes with MS one equipment, they'll be bumped up to the MS one wage at that point. So um it's.
What does that salary range then?
So I believe the top is about twenty-three ninety something.
I don't know. I was not prepared for this discussion this evening, so I don't.
It's in the it's it's in the twenty-three to twenty-four dollars an hour range, so.
I think it's something though that we should sit down and talk about.
Yep.
You know.
Definitely one hundred percent we will, but before we do that, we wanna be able to have data in front of you.
Correct.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So you have the answers to some of those questions.
Right, yeah, maybe not.
I don't see you have to.
Okay, I think Brandon's answered most of our questions.
Yep. Yeah, I just wanna, you know, the the crew, the new crew cleaned the entire town without the graders in twelve hours. I wanna give them a little props, you know, that's their 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 three, you know, they the three guys were brand new. And we, you know, they they went stuff when didn't go our way, they put their nose down and then they got the job done. So says a lot about the crew. Um and eh I should touch on the downtown letters I sent for the snow piling for downtown. I guess to be to sum up in a nutshell, what we're trying to not let happen anymore is, you know, business owners that are cleaning curb lines for two to two parking spots to a half a block and piling it in the center of the block or on the corner. It just creates eh traffic hazards and sightlines are blocked. We're not telling people not to shovel their snow to the curb line or or move their s their snow to the curb line off their sidewalks, you know. In the letter, I asked them to evenly distribute it along the curb line. If let's just say this last snow event, if our graders had broke down, we would have plowed the roads Sunday night. The guys would have so Sunday into Sunday night into Monday morning. So then Monday night into Tuesday morning, they would have made their first pass through downtown. I think it's reasonable to ask the people just to leave the snow where it's at. You know, there's if if you watched a lot of the areas downtown this time, there's room to park there without blocking a lane. They might have to park on a little bit of snow. It that it's not gonna be enough that they get stuck. But it just it it'll reduce the time for us to windrow it to the center and and haul it out. And then it just it reduces the the traffic issues for the PD and 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 it and 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 it and it keeps the, you know, he says, she says, out of how much snow is getting pushed out of a private parking lot too. If there's no snow piles in the street, then you know, we we have places that have a ten foot pile out in front of their eh in front of their business and their parking lot doesn't have a single bucket of snow on it. So where did all that snow go? And all and everybody in town is paying to haul that snow away, that 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 business should have paid to haul away. So eh you know, we're not trying to make everybody's life difficult. We're just trying to find a happy medium for everybody, so. And then I wanted to congratulate Nick Caputo on his recognition. I graduated with Nick. He's worked hard with the kids and it's it's nice to see him get some recognition for it. That's all I got.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Brandon.
So Brandon, I'd like I'd like I'd like to thank you for these notices you send out because they really clarify things. And when people ask me about the snow, it have the answers. Thank you very much.
It's like Darren standing, come on up.
Well, I should only be about ten fifteen minutes longer than Brandon. Just kidding. Just two things real quick. Um tomorrow night eh we have eh shop with a first responder, formerly known as shop with a cop. Um so we're kinda co-hosting that with the sheriff's office. Every year, Don Raskott applies for a grant through Walmart. We've been doing this for many years. Again, this year, we got about a thousand dollars, so um with the help of social services and some other organizations. Uh twenty uh families, less fortunate families are chosen. They each get a fifty dollar gift certificate and how that looks is that we all meet at Walmart, officers, other first responders, fire EMS, take a family and go and buy kids for Christmas or eh presents for Christmas for them. So that's tomorrow night at four thirty. And then eh just a real quick update eh on hiring, same thing, kinda branded reiterated. And about the last thirty days, we're just we we received about two applications. We're just really not receiving a lot of applications. I attended a online training about two weeks ago. It was eh um some data from the Minnesota Post Board and POST stands for Peace Officers Standard and Training. They're in charge of all the peace officer licensing eh eh training, everything associated with with us getting our post license. And they indicated that it's currently we're in a twenty-five year low that they're seeing of eh post license being issued. Currently, there's over a thousand police jobs avail in Minnesota, available in Minnesota. And a lot of the skills programs or police academies, there's about twelve or thirteen in the state and they're seeing a twenty-five reduction in enrollment and or enrollment switching from the two-year programs to four-year programs. So it's not that the people aren't even trained out there where they're just not entering these programs on the backside. So not sure how this is gonna look like in the future, but it's difficult right now. So we had one applicant that we interviewed. Um we're gonna start a background process on him. I would say within the next week, we're still waiting on some information. And then we have an interview on Wednesday with another candidate, so we're hopeful, but not a lot to pick from, so. That's all I have.
Thanks, Darren.
Okay, thank you.
Uh Ryan.
Finance department is kinda working on our annual insurance review. There's a few more things to get online and get filed. Um our deadline on that is December thirty-first. Um we've also started looking at our things for our year end, what we need to prep in our system and start developing to that. With my previous jobs, we've done a lot of things with the automation that is available. And what we've been looking at in finance was to take our credit cards, which takes a lot of time to compile and put together and get into our system. Visited with Brammer Bank a few months ago and we are going now with an automated process with them that giving the department heads a credit card that we can just go right online, create a CSV file. It goes right into our system and will save a lot of time. And Kathy Carlson has really put um a lot of time and effort into keying in these general ledger numbers, getting them to the people and getting these things done. It's a neat app that you'll just put on your phone, that the person can just take a photocopy of the receipt. It goes right into it and then we give the statement one time a month and will save us a lot of time. That's all I got.
Thanks, Ryan. Jake?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh Parks Crew, they finished finished putting up outdoor rinks and they are now flooding. Take a little time, I guess, with the weather. It's kinda going back and forth, but we're getting it done. Um they finished up moving snow last week from the storm and they I had them go down and clean the pool today. So they went inside and um they cleaned the entire pool. So they made it look good. Um a little bit of a pool update. Um Lund Seth out of Grand Forks, they finished up that main pipe that was leaking, so we no longer have a garbage can hanging down anymore. Roto-Ruter from out of Saint Cloud, they're gonna come here tomorrow. Um they're gonna start the process of fixing that pipe that's underneath the pool deck. They'll have to do some pre-work, clean it out and stuff, and then they should finish up Wednesday afternoon, they're thinking. And so right now, we are still on track to open up the twenty-seventh, um unless there's something else that comes up, but. And then last but not least, we have the iPads in for our our new app, our game sheet app for District sixteen. We started using them and they're running good, so that's all I got. Thank you.
Thanks, Jake. Tim?
No, that's not everything on a reading plane, so. Now, the Fire Department held their eh um annual Fire Department banquet and awards um the other night. And Councilman Erickson and Melby attended as former firemen, so I appreciate them coming. A lot of awards were handed out that night and you can read about them on our local media. I'm not gonna go through them all. I'm just gonna highlight on our firefighter of the year this year was Jake Lees, eh very well-deserving. Does a great job for the Fire Department and the Association and he is the Association President, so. Can read about all the awards that we gave out online and I thank both of our local media outlets for doing that. Toys for Tots is going really good. Uh we've had two shopping days out already. Wanna thank the firemen and their families for helping out with that. We'll be doing one more shopping eh this weekend. We've got over two hundred kids so far and I wanna thank the Golden Link for doing all the wrapping. And eh all these gifts will be distributed by firemen and their families and the being elves and Santas on Christmas Eve. So that'll be a good deal. On that donation to the Fire Department eh, I'd like to thank, I'm just gonna use her first name Pearl. She's eh been eh taking advantage of our smoke detector and CO program for several years. She we go visit her annually. She call gives us a call. We make sure she's safe and she very much appreciates what we do for her. And she she knows this is supposed to be a free service we do, but she sees the value in um keeping her safe. And she likes to pass on some money to make sure this program does not go away, so we really wanna thank her for that. Uh last thing, I need to thank firefighter Kent Ellingson for his twenty-five years of eh dedicated service to the Fire Department. He'll be retiring on the end of the year after twenty-five years. Some has paid on call and just under twenty years as a full-time firefighter. I I was his partner for a while and he's a great fireman, great attitude, eh really likable guy, really gonna miss him down there. We have started the hiring process and we're kinda ram-rotting it. Eh we're really kinda running it quick so we don't eh run short very long and eh hopefully it all goes well. And maybe by mid-January, we'll have somebody in his spot. That's all I got.
Thanks, Tim. Robert?
Usually ask you to lower your expectations, but after all this before me, this is lowering your expectations will be no problem here. I got to work eh eh with a couple of local companies on some little small projects that they had. They needed some information on, so we got back to them and are able to send them on their way to their next step. Eh I got to eh eh had a little flashback here. I got to work with a regional manufacturing company that was looking for a small building eh so they could separate out some of their work. Spent a lot of time driving around the city, talking to some building owners. Eh it's tough to find manufacturing space, but we're still eh we're still in this process. Eh got to meet with a couple of local leaders on their pet projects and passions. Eh some we were able to help, eh some we're having to take requests other places. Eh but there's folks who really love what they do and the volunteer work they're doing here and we're trying to support them in that. Got to tour the VFW meeting with Ms Finch. Eh their new owners are very proud of what they're doing there. And eh that's 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 gonna be a pretty interesting project as it progresses. And eh without question, probably one of the many highlights of my last eh two, three weeks has been meeting with some representatives from Ag Innovation eh what they're doing out there, what they're gonna do and their next steps. Every time I talk to those folks, it's just it's a it's a reinvigorating, it is exciting and eh just really happy to be in this part of the world with the the kind of research and agricultural professionals that we get to work with. And it's just gonna be a that's gonna be a a very nice asset to this community when they get up and running.
Thanks, Robert. Bray Gang?
Your report tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Chad?
Thank you, Your Honor. Eh Jake mentioned the three iPads that we deployed at the CSC. Also worked to troubleshoot eh an issue with the Live Barn live streaming service there. We have a main arena back online. We're still working on the second arena. With a ride in the bucket truck from eh Brandon's crew, I was able to get up to the roof of City Hall and reclaim a camera that's been up there for a few years and not working and put that eh to to use in our new theft and loss system here in City Hall. Eh I completed our monthly Microsoft Linux server updates and security patches eh and met with our managed service partner to finalize our migration plans to Microsoft Office three sixty-five and the government tenant space. And that will take place as early in January as possible. And I will be meeting with vendors to finalize the plans for our new city website and fiber internet service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh start with Wayne.
Well, eh not much to report, just Merry Christmas to everybody and eh that came on really quick. And congratulations to eh I we always call him Gus down at the fire hall when I was down there. That's all.
Thank you. Christie?
Um, I wanted to publicly recognize, uh, Tim Minard, who, um, won the, uh, Share Your Love event with Petco, or Your Love Story. Um, and so, um, he won five thousand dollars for the local Humane Society. And there's two more days of voting to actually possibly win another twenty-five thousand dollars for Humane Society. So, check out K O X or Crookston Times or my Facebook, um, or his Facebook, um, to vote. Um, but it's, I think will go a long ways for Humane Society and could go further if more people voted. So, congratulations for that. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Steve?
Um, just wanna put in there for, um, you talked about wages and this and that. Uh, I'd like to see our, do our, our strategy session early. Um, I'd like to see it do a quarterly or two times a year. I think the wage is gonna be the biggest thing. I mean, we've talked, uh, over this many years and we are so far behind or whatever. So, I think we need to get on sooner than later. Uh, I know we usually do it in March or whatever, but, you know, when you get in three months of the year, we all know how fast a year goes. I like to see it, January is a good month to have it, um, early February, whatever. But I think we need to do that sooner than later, um, just because of the, the wages and, and the things that we wanna do and keep the budget where we want and just get more ideas and have more input. I know nobody likes meetings, but at the end of the day, our job is to do the best we can with, with the money we have. And I think we need to be proactive with that coming up, uh, uh, for twenty-twenty-two planning and twenty-twenty-three. So, I just, I just feel like this year came on top of us. I know we had a lot of change over administrator, employees or whatever, but I think we need to get on that sooner than later and, and move on and keep rolling with that for a better twenty-twenty-three budget. And Merry Christmas.
Thanks, Steve. Clayton?
I'd like to compliment Brandon. Uh, I happened to be going to the bus garage this afternoon and, uh, one of the, the employees was operating the grader. He was there not only observing, but sitting in a skid steer assisting. So, thank you, Brandon, for not only being a great department head, but being involved with your staff. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks, Clayton. Don?
I'm gonna thank Mark Landa for coming to our meeting and explaining what he's doing. Good to have you here. Come, come often and see us. That's all I have.
Thanks. Joe?
No report, Your Honor.
Thank you. Delain?
Everything was discussed that I wanted to talk about, so I'll record it.
All right, thanks. Tom?
Just wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
I also wanna thank Mark for showing up. Uh, much appreciated. Um, I went to, uh, the Library Board meeting the other night, had a good conversation with Chris. Uh, very good board. They're in the process of hoping, hopefully finding a replacement for, uh, Sarah Geis to their three-year, two, three-year terms. Should be, uh, greatly missed. Um, I'll, also, I think I have someone for Park Board, Derek Martin, uh, would like to step aside. So, I think I have someone to finish out his term and hopefully will do two more terms. So, uh, I also had the opportunity to, uh, the Diocese of Crookston, as you know, I was hired or appointed a new bishop. And I was very honored to attend, it's called the Vester Ceremony. Don't have a clue what it was, but I did after that. Um, it was really neat. Uh, went to their open house afterwards, uh, a lot at, uh, Crookston Inn, but I would like to welcome Bishop Cousins to our community. So, other than that, uh, I wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas. And I, after next week, the days start getting longer. So, it's gonna be a great week next week. So, um, just a reminder, we have no way, ways and means tonight. Nothing else become before council. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.